All right, we are recording. All right, good evening and welcome everybody to the November 4th Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. I am your Chair Chris Gerber and I welcome everybody this evening. With that said, I ask that everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you, please be seated. And again, as always, I apologize if it looks like I'm looking away. I'll be admitting people in and out of the waiting room as we do have a public hearing tonight. So do excuse me for that. Um, let's see, first matter of the business, has the board had a chance to look over the minutes of the October 7th meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I, any questions on those? Right, so I'll make a motion to accept the October 7th minutes as printed. Second by Robert. On the question.
All right, I second it, yeah.
Aye.
I abstain.
Sandy abstains and then four ayes?
Yes, aye.
Aye.
Has the board had a chance to review the minutes from October 21st meeting?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to accept the October 21st minutes of plan?
Second.
Second by Sandy, any questions? All in favor? All right, five ayes, thank you very much. Sorry, couple people in the waiting room. I would just do to change the agenda up quickly this evening, we're just going to go with timely signs Heritage Financial first. Review revised application for ARB of a proposed color of the directory and wall sign for Hudson Heritage Bank. Located in Strip Mall at 273 Route 32 in Central Valley, said property is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Sections 230 Block 4 Lot 4 dot 1. I believe I saw the applicant, there you go Joe, you're here, right? You're here for everything?
Present.
Really quick, I know there was some confusion at the last meeting about what you guys were actually here for or looking to do. So you just give us a quick rundown of what you're looking to accomplish and we'll go from there.
Absolutely, and I apologize for not being able to log on in the last meeting. But I'm here tonight, so it's a pretty straightforward request. What we're currently looking for is, is there is a existing sign box above Heritage Financial Credit Union at the 273 Route 32 address, as well as a freestanding sign that's double sided. Our request this evening is to change the face in that sign box above, above the branch, as well as the two sides of the existing monument sign. But what we are requesting is the use of the new Heritage Financial Credit Union Navy Blue and khaki color, which is in, which is different than the royal blue and white that is being used by the tenants currently with the exception of Bagel World.
And this is just on the sign above the bank, correct? You're not looking to change the sign on freestanding outside?
Yeah, they are.
No, we are looking to change the tenant panels from the royal blue and white to the navy blue and khaki both on the main monument sign as well as the sign face change for above the the branch and the existing sign cabinet.
Okay, thank you. All right, Natalie, you want to go ahead?
Thanks, Chris. The applicant distributed an email on Monday responding to most of the comments in our memo and I think they succinctly described their request to you tonight. Our only remaining question regarding the wall sign is, I understand that they acquired the former Di Agostino space and we aren't sure if that wall cabinet or that sign cabinet that is above that storefront is proposed to remain or be removed. So we think that that would be something that the applicant could clarify before you. And then also you could consider whether or not the relationship between the existing cabinet that they are proposing to maintain is spatially acceptable to you compared to the others. Other than that, although they are requesting the change to the multi-tenant directory sign and Bagel World previously did install that incorrectly, we believe that's been corrected. So if you're being consistent with your prior actions, then you may not approve that. The change in colors that is. And other than that, as long as the colors that are being proposed are acceptable to you, we believe that you could schedule a public hearing at this time and that's all we have.
Thank you Natalie, anybody from the board has questions for Natalie? Rick? Okay, questions from the board for the applicant?
Just, I mean, is the applicant aware that Bagel World did change to the blue and white? It's now uniform.
Okay, I wasn't, the photo that I have was probably only a few weeks ago, so I think they may have changed it since the last meeting. I've, I sent on a photograph of, you know, I don't know, do you know when that, that Bagel World sign was edited?
It was changed, I think a few months ago. Your, your picture looked like it was taken in the snow.
Yeah, there's snow in that picture.
There is snow in that picture, but I actually have a survey of it since our last meeting and I took photographs again and that Bagel World sign was still up on the monument sign, I believe. If it has changed since the last meeting, that may be different, but we had done a survey the Tuesday after the, the last meeting and that photograph came through that it was still up. If it's changed, I mean, I would accept, I haven't been, I haven't been past it since our last meeting. So if it's changed since the last meeting or since our last survey, I can certainly understand that, but I mean, it was black and green the last time I had seen it.
Yeah, what, uh, what had happened was is your application triggered a review. What we noticed was that the only thing that was approved for Bagel World was the sign above the site. The multi-tenant sign was actually never supposed to have been installed.
The tenant withdrew it, actually. They withdrew that portion of their request.
They installed it, the building inspector noticed, asked them to put it back to the color that it was supposed to be because it was never approved.
But regardless of what Bagel World has done with their sign, it's a matter of enforcement. When you're coming before this board, you have to have something that conforms.
Correct, so the, the reason that we presented it was that we were under the impression that they had gotten permission. We didn't go into the, into the past of what Bagel World had done. So if the request is that we have to follow the blue and white and that's the, that's the standard set for the tenants, then we would follow that standard. We were just under the impression that the precedent had been set that Bagel World and you were able to use your logo colors for the monument based on what other tenants had done.
Understood. Anybody else in the board have questions for the applicant? No, Rick, do you have anything else?
Other than we need to schedule a public hearing.
Right, but I think the question is going to be, does the applicant want to modify their application, right? To withdraw the change to the multi-tenant sign?
We will, we'll withdraw the change to the multi-tenant sign and revert back to actually what it is currently. We had received a permit for the, the blue that matches the plaza originally. The bank had changed their name and their logo colors. We had actually changed out the faces to match the standard blue that has been used throughout the plaza. So currently, you know, right now, that tenant panel is the royal blue that matches the plaza. We were proposing to go for a color change, so we would, we would withdraw that request because we've already received a permit for, for the tenant panel in the blue and white that is accepted.
Okay.
So that exists.
All right, so then we just need to schedule a public hearing to change the, the sign panel. And it is just, the picture that you had submitted on 1016 revision 02, that is a sign panel that's staying, nothing else is changing. You're just taking, taking that panel out and putting the new one in with this darker, dark blue and almost gold color.
Correct, nothing changes on the sign, the sign is the same size. The only thing that's changing is the, is the face plate. No lighting, no lighting change. No significant change other than the face itself, like for like slot.
Does the board feel okay with setting a public hearing then?
Yes. I will go with that.
All right, I'll make a motion to this to our November 18th agenda for a public hearing?
A second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we will see you then.
Excellent, thanks.
What's the date of that, Chris, I'm sorry?
18th, our next meeting.
We'll be, we'll get an email notification from Ryan.
Yes.
Excellent, thanks guys, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, Shops at Woodbury, public hearing for proposed revised site plan submitted for a mixed-use development to include retail stores, restaurants and a hotel, said properties located at the intersection of Route 32 and Losi Lane and is known to the Village of Woodbury Tax Map Section 225 Block 1 Lot 34 dot 1 and 34 dot 2. Just for the information, this public hearing was noticed in, on Friday, October 30th. Who is, who is taking the lead for the applicant tonight?
Mr. Chairman, this is Dominic Crisco, thank, first of all, let me say thank you for having and holding the public hearing. And I also wanted to apologize, I was not able to make your last meeting. So the fact that you're moving forward and even during the pandemic and holding public hearings is very much appreciated. So thank you all and it's all, it's good to see you all as well. I am here tonight with Stephen Esposito, Aaron Goldclang, Kevin Van Heys and John Canning, I believe is here as well. All in connection on behalf of the Shops at Woodbury. I'm sure, and I'll turn it over to Kevin in, in just a moment, but I'm sure you're all familiar with the fact that this is the site that's across from the Woodbury Center that was previously approved and started construction for Cabela's. But then when Cabela's stopped, it was ultimately sold and transferred to the Shops at Woodbury. And they are proposing commercial development on this site. I know that you've seen the plans a, a number of times, but I'm sure that we do have some members of the public here. And so if it's, if it's helpful for the board, I'd turn it over to both Steve and Kevin. Kevin is able to share his screen so we can put the plans up if that's helpful. And we can provide a overview of, of the proposal and, and then turn it over to the public if you would.
Sure. You want to try to share your screen, Kevin?
Still saying disabled.
You want to give it a shot again?
Okay, you see that?
Yep.
Okay, I can run through this really quickly, there's not been obviously any changes since we, we were before you last for the benefit of the public. We are proposing a mix of retail, restaurant, fast food and hotel uses on the site. We've been before the zoning board of appeal and have received variances to support this plan. We have made, based on comments we received from the board's engineer, traffic engineer and planner, some really minor modifications that are reflected here, those have been reviewed or at least have been made in conjunction with coordination with NICE dot. Those are some minor changes to the entrance and exit to the park and ride. A minor change to the alignment of the driveway. We, in discussion, two planning board meetings ago, there was a request to provide more green space. So we removed some parking in this area here to facilitate that, which can be added back if necessary. We're in the process of responding to the comments that we received prior to the last planning board meeting from both the Village of Harriman for the water distribution plan as well as the Woodbury comments related to the site plan.
Natalie?
Since there were no new materials received, we don't have much to report on other than some correspondence that occurred since the last meeting regarding the applicant's request for an ESO meeting and then also loading berth requirements. We did provide a copy of our carryover memorandum to the applicant so they should be aware of the requirements for the loading berths. And then it's at their discretion to request the ESO meeting. And other than that, this is scheduled for public hearing and we have nothing further.
Thank you Natalie. Members of the board want me to go out to the public first?
Yes.
Okay, as this is a public hearing, when you, if you are speaking on this application, I ask that you state your full name and the city that you are from for the record. I ask that you keep your comments limited and limited to three minutes. And I ask that you address the board directly and not the applicants or any of the consultants. And we will do our best to can, we can to address any concerns that come up this evening. I am simply just going to go in order that I see people on my screen. And I apologize if I mispronounce anybody's name. It's, I just, don't take it personal. So with that, the first person I see is Suzie.
Hi, my name is Suzie Stone. I am an attorney at Bluestein Shapiro Rich and Brown. And our firm represents the successor trustees of the 1960s trusts established by William Avril Harriman on behalf of his grandchildren. Two of his grandchildren were on the, at the previous PB hearing, they may be here tonight. David Mortimer and Avril Mortimer. And on behalf of our clients, we do have some questions about the project. We first wanted to get some verification about the record owner and applicant. We understand it's a shops at Woodbury LLC. Who is the, who are the members of that entity? Do we have that information? Is it, I see it's Basia as the screen name, is it Aaron Goldclang?
Rick, don't we have the LLC disclosure form?
Yes. A couple of things, one, you know, this is a public hearing to hear comments relative to your site plan approval. If somebody wants to have some information, they can ask for that. And the board will see what it can do to respond at a different time. But I don't think that it makes sense to divert, to answer a lot of questions along these lines. There is an LLC disclosure form that I believe was filled out and it would be in the file in the building department.
Okay, my main point of asking these questions, thank you Rick, is I want to understand what other projects the record owner has done in the area in Orange County or Rockland County. Are we able to have more disclosure on that at this point?
I don't think there's anything that's been presented to the planning board with respect to their other projects. We typically don't ask for that information. But to the extent that any information has been requested or has been submitted, even if unrequested, would either be found in the minutes or in the file itself.
In which file you're talking about?
The building department.
Building department, okay. And, and how, we would also like to get a sense of the successes and failures of any projects that the record owner has been involved in, including any bankruptcies.
Again, to the extent that anything is in the file, you're more than welcome to review it. The board has not requested that information of the applicant specifically. Nor to my knowledge, does it do that on any other application.
Okay, um, do we, are we aware of who is funding this project? Do we have that information?
I don't believe, I mean, there might be some information in the file with respect to certain people or entities. And whether or not they are funding it, I do not know and to what extent. Again, that's not something that is typically part of the site plan review. And to my knowledge on this application, as is typical with others, we have not asked for that information.
One of the reasons why the Mortimers are interested in these, in this site and this hearing is that this site is the subject of a restrictive covenant. You may be aware that there is a fast food restrictive covenant encumbering lots 34.1 and 34.2. So we would like to know whether, you know, the board or the applicant has any information, any information about the lender being aware of this restrictive covenant encumbering the properties.
Yeah, I, I have, the planning board nor I would have no knowledge of whether or not the lender is aware of that or not. And it wouldn't be the inappropriate role of the board to reach out to any lenders to, to, to advise them of various issues with respect to a project. I will tell you that my general understanding of such restrictive covenants is different than the letter that was recently submitted by your partner Gardner. But, you know, I have not looked at the cases that Tad had put in there. But on behalf of the planning board, I will be responding to that letter.
Okay. The last planning board meeting mentioned a Melody Lane project, is that right?
No, it's not a Melody Lane project. What it is, is that there is a portion of this project that is a paper road owned by the Village of Woodbury. And in order for this project to proceed, the Village of Woodbury would have to give or sell that particular parcel to this applicant. It had previously done so with the prior applicant Cabela's. But that was contingent upon Cabela's actually being substantially complete for that grant to be effective, they did not achieve that status and therefore that grant was not effective. The applicant has asked the Board of Trustees, inquired of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Woodbury to sell the property to it. There are some documents on file with the Village Board of Trustees. Village Board of Trustees has asked for some additional information and I believe that will be forthcoming at some point in time.
So what exactly is the interrelation between that conveyance and then the subject project?
It is part of the property for which they are asking for a site plan and they don't own it.
Gotcha, have there been any traffic studies or, studies or reviews about that interrelation?
There have been traffic studies, I don't know, to my knowledge, it hasn't been a traffic study dealing with that particular paper road. But there have been many traffic studies and with respect to this project.
Are there plans to do a traffic study in connection with Melody Lane in this project?
The village-owned parcel is a paper road, it's not a real road.
Okay. And so what is, oh, what's the significance of it being a paper road where you wouldn't need to do?
It's just that, although it's called that, it's just a parcel of land, vacant land.
Okay. The hotel, I, I understand it's, it's planned to be five stories rather than three?
Yes.
Okay, was that an increase over three or just filling, filling in on the factors here?
Right. My understanding, it's always been that since this project has been in front of this board.
Okay, all right, so five stories. And why, the question is why would, why would it be planned for five stories when it would have, when that height would have a significant impact on the increased need for parking spaces, the loss of the ridgeline and green space? Further destruction of the Ridge Preservation, Preservation View Quarter?
The hotel district allows for that size of a structure in this area.
Okay, going on to, I'm interested in traffic, in the traffic studies. I did not see any kind of SECRE studies in the planning board's document center. I understand that the applicant used Cabela's previous secret studies, is that correct?
Yes.
There was a, I believe a consistency determination by this board with respect to seeker.
And are those available to the public?
Absolutely.
Where are they located?
I believe the consistency statement, I, I can't recall now whether it was a separate resolution that was in writing or it was just a motion that was approved at a meeting.
It was, it was a motion approved, a planning board meeting in January 2019. There was a traffic.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you. Whoever, excuse me, whoever was speaking said there was something in January 2019, I'm having trouble hearing you however. If you could repeat yourself. Did you, did, I'm not sure who spoke, could someone fill me in on who the?
You know, that was for the applicant?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
That was Steve Esposito.
Oh, Steve, hi Steve. I've spoken with you before, just on other things. So what happened in January 2019?
Can't hear you Steve.
Yes, Steve, this is Dominic Crisco, Steve is having some technical difficulties. His laptop is not picking up his audio signal, so he's been trying to dial in, but that's, he's been having some challenges there. I can answer the question, the board had previously made a determination that this project with its environmental impacts are consistent with the previously approved and under construction impacts associated with the Cabela's project. And so that concluded the secret process and that was done by motion.
I see, and that's, that's what happened, the motion was what happened in January 2019. So I, I have not been able to review those secret, secret studies. Is that something that is available online? I could not find them.
It's available in the building department's file, I don't, not sure exactly what's online, but all of the prior Cabela's seeker, as well as the secret consistency determination made for this project is part of the record.
Okay, is that something that would normally be available on the planning board's document center?
Not necessarily.
Okay, so one of the, one of the aspects of that study, I mean, we're interested in the traffic studies. So, so one of the questions is, how is the anticipated traffic that will be generated by fast food with drive-throughs different? If there were no fast food operations, has that kind of study been done?
All right, what is typical Suzie with respect to this planning board and many others? Is that public hearings don't end up to be this extended back and forth of, of answering questions and sort of discussion. It's an opportunity for the planning board to hear comments from the public so that it, its decision-making can be better informed. And sometimes there are questions that to be asked, sometimes they're simple and they can be easily answered. Other times. Other times, it would just have to take a look at the record. But it's not sort of an opportunity to have the planning board respond to every inquiry or concern that you have. If you have a concern about traffic, present the traffic concern that you have and that will be considered by the board when it's making its decisions.
Um, I appreciate that, Rick. Um, I mean, you know, as, as, as a public hearing, this is an opportunity to get more information about the project and we do have concerns about the traffic impact that fast food, that the three fast food restaurants with drive through, drive-throughs would have on the area.
And what I'm saying is that there have been detailed traffic studies by the applicant, responsive traffic analysis by the planning board's traffic engineer, and all of those documents are in the planning board file.
Um, I, okay, I did not see the traffic studies in the planning board file. I didn't see any kind of environmental assessment form or any kind of other environmental diligence analysis in the plan.
Have you looked, have you looked at the building department file or just what's online?
No, just what's online.
Yeah, okay, please make an, an opport, make a appointment to look at the file in the building department. There's a lot of things in there.
Fair enough. Um, I have just a couple more points and questions to go through here. So are we saying that there was, there has not been any kind of analysis done, fast food versus not fast food with drive-throughs?
No, I didn't say that at all. I just said that there were traffic studies and they analyzed all of the traffic, including the various demands and the assumptions that were built into those traffic studies and the responsive analysis by the planning board's engineer.
Did the Cabela's site have fast food proposals?
Uh, not to my knowledge, but I really don't recall the, all of the specifics of the Cabela's project.
So if there were none, it wouldn't have had that kind of analysis that I'm asking about now. Um.
I'm not, there were, I'm not, I'm not talking about just the traffic analyses that were done by Cabela's. There were also traffic analyses that were done by shops at Woodbury that would be in the file.
Mm-hmm, okay, I see. Alternatives under SECRRA? Has a planning board considered alternatives under SECRRA approval, approval for sit-down restaurants as opposed to three proposed fast food restaurants?
The, what the planning board considered will be in the record, both in the minutes as well as in the documents. And they made a consistency finding based upon the prior secret analysis as well, under Cabela's, and they found that it was consistent with that determination. And for the particulars, you'd have to go through the, the file. None of us have that at our fingertips.
So the number of vehicle trips generated per hour for fast food operations, is that something that would be in the file as well?
If it exists, it would be in the file.
Has the planning board considered the feasibility of approving this project without fast food operations with drive-throughs?
The, the planning board is still considering this particular project and various aspects of it. It's, this isn't at the very end of the situation is asked to have a public hearing, so the planning board can be better informed of it. But if you have a concern with respect to that, present your concern and that will be considered by the planning board.
Okay. I mean, I think the overarching concern, and Rick, I appreciate, I've been, I know I've taken more than three minutes that the chair offered and I appreciate your patience in answering all these questions. You know, the overarching concern is that there is this, you know, there, there is this fast food restrictive covenant on the property. You know, the Harriman family's been in, as everyone knows here, they've been in this area for, since the eighteen eighties, over a hundred and thirty-five years. And all of the sites in and around this, this subject site, you know, we're talking about the transportation hub with Route thirteen, Route seventeen, thirty-two, I eighty-seven, the Monroe Woodbury Schools, Woodbury Common, they're all a result of the Harriman's contributions to the community. So, you know, this, uh, project, you know, is, um, I've seen the, the applicant's determination that, you know, there's been a lot of development in this area, there's been topographical kind of, um, you know, uh, you know, destruction of the area and, and meanwhile, there's not a lot of ridgeline preservation concerns or scenic backdrop concerns and the Harriman's strongly disagree with that. The whole area is surrounded by, you know, mountains and trees and a lot of the forty thousand acres that originally was within their stewardship. So that is something that, that is a comment I think that the planning board should take into consideration. That kind of preservation of, um, that intended, you know, scenic backdrop and ridgeline view issue. I mean, to the extent that, you know, that any questions that I've asked here have not been answered, I would ask that the planning board keep this hearing open until we have had an opportunity to review or have those questions answered. I'm not sure if that's something the chair can grant now or, uh, you know.
It, it's going to be something that at the, at some point in time, this evening, the board will decide whether or not to close the public hearing or whether or not to keep it open.
And that would be by vote of the board?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I would urge the board to consider keeping the public hearing open, um, pending the, pending the, uh, answers to the questions I've, I've posed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, Suzie. Charles Buzaldo?
Bizzidlo, probably.
So, thank you, Rick. Always keep me on the straight and narrow.
Thanks, Rick, appreciate it. So, hold on a second, let me, oh, there I am, alive. Okay, very good. Good evening, board. Um, my name's Charlie Bizzidlo. I'm an attorney up in Pine Bush, New York. As some of the board members may know, my client is Millwood Place, the developers, owners of the hotel over as part of the Woodbury Center across the street from this project. Um, I, I'll keep my comments, uh, short tonight. And again, you know, to reiterate what the last speaker said, I would hope that the board would keep the, keep the public hearing open. Because I think there are several questions about this project that still need to be answered. But the, the main gist of what I want to ask the board about tonight or, you know, bring to the board's attention tonight is the issue of, of the seeker analysis that's been done on this project. I know it seems to be the applicant's position that there was, I guess what's called a term of art here, a seeker consistency determination that was issued by this board and it was just by a voice, a voice vote sometime back in early two thousand nineteen. And, uh, as you look at the records that are available online on the planning board's website, uh, there, there's nothing there from what this project looked like in late two thousand eighteen, early two thousand nineteen. So it's really hard to know how this project has changed since the time the board made that decision. A couple of issues I, I know that the board has raised in the interim is the idea of the, the height of the hotel. The, the overall sore demand of this project versus what the, what Cabela's was at the time it was being planned. There's an issue about parking space waivers, which I think is pretty significant on this project from a requirement of five hundred and seventy-eight spaces down to somewhere around four sixty-seven, four seventy, somewhere in there. And just the idea of examining what this site looks like before they start construction of the shopping center or potentially start construction of the shopping center. You know, as the applicant has, uh, you know, and I believe the board's aware of too, this site has changed quite a bit over the last couple of years and each one of those changes, whether done by the DOT, the contractor for the DOT bringing material onto this site to change the grade, all those, all those projects, major that they were, were all examined separately under seeker. And so I think, I think there's a real question about the overall seeker segmentation on this project. And it's a large project, you know, the, the overall square footage of this project, the overall acreage disturbance would qualify this project as a type one action. And as I know the board and your council's aware, you know, type one actions typically require full environmental impact statements. Or certainly a very intensive review of potential environmental impacts. And I don't think that exists in the record of this site or of this project, excuse me. The, 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 to jump from what was done for Cabela's to the site, particularly thinking about what's changed on this project over the last three years or so, in my opinion, is, is a very big leap. And I think that's something the board needs to consider before you would take any further action on this project. And just not to take up too much of the board's time, uh, I believe the board is also aware of the fact that in the chain, the title of this property, there is a covenant against the construction of hotels on this project. That, that, that comes about from when the property was transferred from previous owners, not the Harriman's. It's not, it's not a Harriman Hotel restriction, but it came from the previous owners and their transfer over to Cabela's and from Cabela's, then it's then chained a title over to shops at Woodbury. So, uh, overall, I think the project has two major development restrictions facing it, and I think that is something the board needs to consider in whether they want to go ahead with the project or not. So that's my comments briefly, trying to stay under the three minutes. And again, I would ask the board to please keep the public hearing open so these issues can be investigated further. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Donovan Lockman, Eric, you're Osborne, you're here for Summit, correct? I believe Morty is too.
Yes, I'm here too.
Okay. Uh, C Harrison. Okay, Timothy Egan.
Uh, nothing, thank you.
He's with H two M and John is, Canning is with you guys. Okay. Did I miss anybody in the public that wished to speak to this application? We did receive one letter today from the building department. Rick, should I read that in or should? One written comment?
Chris, I think typically I don't suggest that comments be read in because they can get rather lengthy, but this one was not that lengthy, so it's up to your discretion and if you want to read it in, um, then it wouldn't take up much time. That way the applicant is also aware of it if it hasn't received a copy of it.
Yeah, that's the only reason I was. Sorry, I had the wrong email open. This was received from Robin Kraus. She lives in Highland Mills. For the record, I am off the following comments for the public hearing in the shops at Woodbury. I am opposed to the current plan as submitted. I feel the square footage and the number of uses are too much for the site. I would like to see a pared down version of the submission. The applicant has stated that the project will be phased. I suggest that a smaller version of the project be considered first. The uses are market-driven and we are in a state of uncertainty at this point. Additionally, there are too many substantial unresolved issues, water, sewer, traffic, as well as access to the site. I believe these issues should be resolved prior to approval. Finally, if the board is inclined to improve this project as submitted, I suggest, I suggest a condition be imposed that individual uses slash square footage not be allowed to be split in the future like Woodbury Commons has done in the past. This would potentially impact water, sewer, traffic in a negative way. Thank you for consideration of the above, Robin Kraus. And that is the only written comment we received so far in this project. Members of the board, um, hearing what we've heard from the public so far, what is your pleasure with the public hearing?
I'll tell you the truth, I think we should keep it open. There's been many questions that have been brought forth tonight and I think they need investigation.
Yes, uh, I know Kevin, there was also a request for a mock-up of what the sign would look like.
Yes, we have provided, um, the details, actually on this sheet.
Yeah, we didn't get these submissions yet, so as you know, we couldn't, we can't use, uh,
Understood.
Comment on this evening. But I would, I would like, uh, if, even if that, uh, you could just submit a mock-up of what the sign would look like, so it would be available for the public to give input on, it would be greatly appreciated.
Sure.
Okay. Um, Sandy, how do you feel?
I don't see any harm in keeping it open.
Tommy?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, keep it open. I got definitely got some interest with these hotel restrictions.
And Rich? You were muted, but I read your lips. Still muted. Still muted.
I agree.
Okay, I will offer a motion to continue the public hearing to, um, normally we just do our next meeting, right, Rick?
Yeah, it would, um, if you think that this is going to be on your next meeting, then yes, you would have it on your next meeting. If you thought that this was going to be had in two meetings, then you'd continue to that night.
Mr. Chairman, if I could weigh in, we are working on a resubmission to address the last round of comments that we had received on this. And obviously, you know, as Kevin had shown you, that there's signed details now on this version of the plan. My suggestion would be to actually hold it over to, not to the next meeting, but allow us to make this resubmission and then have it on your subsequent meeting. So that way the board will have an opportunity to review everything that we're preparing, uh, and then you can, uh, review it and it'll be available for the public as well at that time. I think, you, you know, I understand that the board has concerns and that, and that the, the Harriman family and the owner of the Hilton Garden Inn, uh, you know, have, uh, raised questions tonight. Some of these, and I think the majority of those questions actually fall into two categories. One of them is information that's been pending before the board for the last several years as the board has been considering this project. And then the other, you know, aspect of it is relates to, uh, private rights of easements, uh, between parties, uh, which, uh, you know, has been the subject of negotiations and discussions between those parties and I'll just leave that at that. But, uh, I think it would be most helpful, uh, rather than just holding it over to your next meeting, to hold it over to the subsequent meeting so that we can make that submission.
Okay, so the subsequent meeting would be December second. Would you feel comfortable, uh, with that date that you'd have your submission in in time for it to be reviewed by our consultants and the board?
We understood that the submission date for that meeting would be November seventeenth, which was what we were working towards.
Okay, yeah, that would be, you would be correct. Okay, so I will offer a motion to hold a public hearing open till our December second meeting.
Seconded.
A second by Robert. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
It's clear, Chris, just so it's clear to everyone. Because this is a continuation of a public hearing, there is no new publication, uh, a notice publication that's required. The notice is done during this meeting and so the public is on notice simply by your motion that was just had. So nobody should expect that there would be a new publication notice in the paper.
Thank you for that. And Rick, I could authorize the ESO meeting, right? At this point?
Yeah, you can ask for an ESO meeting to be had.
Natalie, can you draft the memo? For that?
Yes, we'll, uh, we'll let Maria know and work with her on coordinating and scheduling that.
And Chris, can I just ask a question on what we're looking at right now?
All right, Cindy.
Kevin, can, I know you went over quickly what changes were on here, but since we don't have this yet, is there any way to like redline what has changed? I know that, that parking space down by the lower portion of the hotel, that that's, that's different from the map that we have. But anything else that's different from the last submission?
No, no, nothing has changed.
That's it? Just that?
Just, yeah, this was what was reviewed the last time.
But we don't have this map or, or we don't have this, right? This rendering?
This, no, not this rendering, this is the landscape plan that was not, it was not rendered prior, no.
Okay.
You didn't have this, that's correct.
Okay. So nothing other than that one portion has changed?
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board for the applicant? No, okay, Rick, anything else, Dan?
Yeah, I, I have a couple of things that I just wanted to bring up. One is with respect to the signage, um, as we had this discussion at the last meeting. And the applicant at that point was, um, determining, basically saying they, um, they, they wanted to postpone, uh, the signage approvals until afterwards because they don't have, uh, any tenants right now. And so they, um, had said that we will simply, um, apply for signage permits that are permitted under the code to Gary. And that's not appropriate, that in accordance with the code, when it's in conjunction with a site plan before you, it's the planning board that approves those signs. And so, um, I wanted to make that clear for the record. Now, it is not unusual, especially with some commercial projects, that, um, the sign aspect, just like ARB sometimes is, is postponed until after the underlying site plan approval. But if they wanted it postponed, if this board agreed to postpone signage, approval of a signage plan, um, that can be done, but they would have to come back to the board to have the signage approved. They could not simply go to the building inspector and ask for a permit for a sign that happened to be within the dimensional allowances in the code. And it's the board's discretion. Um, you can require that there be signage approved now, um, even if they don't have tenants. And then the tenants will have to comply with it or come back for modifications to you. Or you could do, um, sort of a hybrid where you want to approve some things and you had expressed, uh, interest, Mr. Chairman, last time of, um, the tenant sign and what that would look like, uh, because that has a big impact on, um, the application and the visual impact as well. And so, um, you could just require that the tenant sign is something that you would approve, along with this site plan and then defer the others if that's what you wanted. And you don't need to make a determination tonight, obviously, but I wanted to address that issue, uh, because I think it's an important one. Again, one of the, I think, a fundamental issue that has to get addressed and this board, in my opinion, cannot approve a site plan until the board of trustees, and the applicant, uh, agree to, um, terms whereby that piece of land is, um, transferred over to the applicant or the applicant changes its application to avoid the use of that property. Um, that's something that, just like an owner authorization, you wouldn't be able to go ahead and approve a site plan without, uh, the owner of the property agreeing to what is being proposed to you. The, I don't know whether the applicant has any agreements, um, either stormwater or other agreements with the state or the county in connection with, um, that might affect the site plan. But if they do, I would ask that they submit those, uh, agreements to the building department and for us to review. Also, um, I believe that Steve Esposito said that this was previously provided, but we couldn't find it. All existing and proposed easements, uh, should be listed on the plans and, uh, our office should be given copies of all of those, um, existing and proposed easements. And we looked, um, Steve, and we could not find it. You said that you had submitted to the building department, but we have not seen those. So if I could, uh, ask for you to resubmit those, I'd, I'd appreciate it greatly. Also, with respect to Seeker, um, as you know, and this was raised by H2M in the past, is that, um, one of the things that is clearly different, uh, from this project than Cabela's was the amount of, of the sewer demand that, um, is happening on this project. And, um, as a result, this board needs to, um, make a determination as to whether or not the prior seeker was adequate or whether or not, um, it needs to be addressed by one way or the other under, um, Seeker. The applicant, um, has discussed at, at some point in time about the possibility of, um, some contributions to the Village of Woodbury in connection, uh, with its sewer capacity needs such as, uh, the village needs I and I done. Um, and because its sewer capacity is not unlimited. If in fact, there are certain discrete, um, fixes, if you will, to the larger sewer demand, this board may entertain, um, something that normally doesn't do, which is a condition negative declaration. But that's something that I just wanted to put out there now so the applicant can consider it and, uh, maybe address that issue and for the board to, and, and H2M to keep those things in its mind and memos so that it can, uh, be addressed. And that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Okay, before, uh, we let the applicant go for the evening, anybody else from the board or our consultants? Or from the applicant?
No.
One, once, twice? All right, thank you very much, everybody, for your time this evening and we will see you back on the 2nd of December.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for your time.
Last, certainly not least, uh, Glock Summit Properties ARB Review Application Submitted For ARB Review Of Five Single Family Homes Located On Summit Avenue In Central Valley. Said property is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 228, Block 9, Lots 1.22, 1.22, 4.21, 4.241, 4.243. I know I saw Morty and Eric. Okay, good evening, gentlemen.
Hi, good evening. Morty.
All right, you know what, Natalie, why don't we go, uh, we'll go with our consultants first and then we'll move in to you guys. Um, just, just so everybody's aware, Morty, I know I sent an email earlier. All, any documents that were sent via email today, we cannot review or use tonight to discuss, uh, because our consultants and this board has, have not had time to, uh, properly vet and look them over. But just keeps everybody in a, uh, level playing field here. All right. Natalie, you want to go ahead first?
Sure, uh, this application is for consideration of ARB and Ridge Preservation for five homes as part of a previously approved subdivision. In order to make a decision on these code requirements, you should consider the proposed colors, materials, uh, exposure of the homes on the lots and limits of clearing, among other criteria that's spelled out in the code and also summarized in our memo. Uh, at this point, we think it would be appropriate for the board to consider any, uh, materials that you would need to sort of help make this determination on what is acceptable to you. Uh, we suggest a couple of things in our memo, including listing the height of the rear of the homes on the plans, uh, to assess the exposure and the visibility according to Ridge Preservation. Uh, we also think it would be appropriate to discuss the renderings that were provided and whether or not they represent the actual setting or just a typical setting. Um, we also think it would be helpful for, uh, the applicant to provide, uh, information about the neighboring homes, um, so that you can consider similarity and dissimilarity according to ARB. Uh, as you stated, the applicant did submit some plans today which show the limits of clearing and also, um, landscaping proposed, which is appropriate. And as you said, we didn't have time to review that thoroughly, uh, which we will for the future meeting. Uh, one thing we wanted to note is although the applicant did submit detailed site plans, this is for ARB and Ridge Preservation. Uh, so where you are reviewing the clearing limits and the landscaping, that's acceptable. But ultimately, the, the site plan and, uh, the utilities, uh, will be decided on Gary when they apply for a building permit. Uh, and if Rick has anything to offer on that, we defer to his advice always. Um, what else? We also think that what the applicant has provided now as far as colors, uh, and floor plans, you may have enough to discuss whether or not you think those materials and colors are acceptable and also, uh, the volume of the homes, uh, and size. Our memo lists a table of living area compared to other homes that were approved as part of the subdivision. Uh, I note that the proposed homes are approximately 20 to 49% larger. Uh, and what we haven't included there is the unfinished spaces in those homes. And you'll see in the floor plans that there are large unfinished. Basically, um, the degree of variance in, uh, the size of structures that have already been constructed and what's being proposed would just be increased. Also, our memo notes that there were conditions of the resolution for the subdivision, uh, that we've requested the applicant, uh, verify that they've been completed and, uh, that all is acceptable there. And I think that pretty much summarizes what we have for now. If you guys have any questions, we happy to help answer them.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions for Natalie? All right, Jonathan?
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, our memorandum was, uh, dated October 28th. And, uh, we really, uh, uh, came to very similar conclusions as the engineering firm. We noted that, uh, they have provided plot plans, but they do not include proposed landscaping, uh, and limits of, of clearing. The, uh, the size of the structures, uh, in the, when I looked at the, uh, the different figures and made the table that's on page three of our memo, uh, I just looked at the gross overall, uh, floor area because, uh, from a planning perspective, if, uh, someone's basement is unfinished or if half the upstairs is unfinished, it doesn't make the house smaller. Uh, the house is still the same size as it is on the outside. So when you're, if, if you're trying to evaluate how big something is, saying that, you know, half of the floor area inside isn't going to be fitted out or with rugs and wallpaper or whatever, really doesn't make, uh, is, isn't that useful? So that's why I went with the gross figures and I hope you may find that helpful in your evaluation when you're trying to figure out, uh, similarity or dissimilarity standards. And, uh, also, uh, Ridge Preservation, uh, we, uh, listed that, uh, you are supposed to be looking at no removal of eight inch or greater caliber trees and without the landscaping plan, without the limits of clearing and without knowing what trees are, are being removed, you're not going to be able to, um, to make those, uh, determinations. So really, uh, uh, we appreciate that the applicant submitted the, the various plot plans. Also, we had noted that, uh, you had wanted to know lot coverage in terms of the impact of how much of each site would be covered. And on lot number six, they had been missing, uh, lot coverage provided. But that may have been covered in, uh, some of the, uh, the newer, the newer submittals received that haven't been reviewed yet. And that's our report.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for Jonathan?
Um, just quickly on the, the, the trees to be removed. Haven't, hasn't the board in past, um, some past developments, I mean, I wasn't on the board at that time, but didn't they ask for like a, uh, almost like a map of what trees would be were to be removed?
Yes, a landscaping plan would typically show, uh, X's through the big trees taken out and, uh, which would be the tree removals. And one of the points Natalie made is some of this work may have been done, uh, with the subdivision. Uh, you know, uh, there, there may be some detail that was done during the development of the subdivision on each of these lots. But we, but they, they need to, to take that out and, and, and look at that. But yes, usually, uh, we're presented with a tree removal plan for anything over eight inches in ridge protection.
Okay, because, Chris, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels. Um, cause I think it would be wise if we did a, a site visit on this parcel. Just, you know.
Well, there are five, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't, I drove up there probably last week and the, the, I guess the back lots that go against WP are, are fairly heavily, um, wooded. Yeah, the, the lots on the other side of the street have, some of them have been cleared, but not all of them. So I definitely think, um, I think it was a tree survey or something it was called. I know we've talked about this.
Right, that's correct. And I think it would be helpful for your site visit to kind of understand where those limits of clearing would be. And then the applicant could mark the trees that are proposed to remain or removed, uh, that are greater than eight inches.
Yeah, because I know when we went up to, um, I think it was Apple Hill Estates, that house there, it really, it really made a difference to, to be able to see what was being, going to be taken down and where the house was going to be placed and everything.
Absolutely.
So if we could get that done maybe before the, the snow flies. Blowing already?
It'll be hot this weekend.
Typically stakes are just driven into the, um, corners of the building driveway. So it gets, we can get an overall feel for how the house would be situated on the lot. Um, you know, and you just, you know, back, right, front, right driveway, right? And that's what we've done in the past, if I remember correctly, they kind of just flag it and stake it and go from there.
Yeah, just so we can get a visual, especially since there's ridge preservation involved.
Um, so if you guys, that'd be great. And then, um, just let the building department know when it's done. Um, I don't think we need to set a specific date for a site visit because it's, uh, relatively easy to get up there. Um, unless we want to set a date or that's up to you.
Well, I think it depends on when they can get it done. Right?
You're muted, Eric.
So, so we can notify the board when we have it done? Send an email to the building department, say that all the property, corners, house, corners, driveway have been staked and then the board can make a decision when they want to go.
Will the, will the trees be marked also at that point? Whatever trees will be removed?
Well, if we need to, to mark those trees to be removed, we'll do that too. Like, like, like what discussed before, that you show where the house driveway, all that gold septic. Uh, well, all that area has to be cleared in order to get a house there.
That's true.
I think what-
And then in addition to that, any trees that are greater than eight inch at same or at breast height should also be marked that are proposed for removal. Um, and that'll be within the limits of clearing to create your yard and others.
Okay.
Okay.
We can do that.
And that would be okay, Rick, if they just notify the building department, right? We don't need to set a specific date.
That's correct.
And then we can kind of just go up there on their, their time and take a look.
So then we'll be, we'll just receive an email and we can do it.
I think that's, I think that's easier than trying to coordinate. You know, we run into a problem with the five of us trying to coordinate schedules. And now that the nights are getting a little shorter, you know, it's dark by five o'clock, soon to be four.
But it's okay that we're just, I mean, we don't need anything to be up there.
We actually have a new form that they sign that gives us permission to be on the property Monday through Friday, eight to eight for this type of-
Oh, okay. Good.
Yeah, there's some brilliant minds that, that thought of that, Chris.
It wasn't mine.
No, it wasn't mine either.
I can't take all the credit, but I Google very well. All right, the, so the other question was the colorings on, this is where I miss in public meetings, because now I'm going to be like this. The, the, the render, colors and stuff that are on the, on the renderings that were given us. Are these just colors that you picked randomly? Or are these the colors that you think will be the final, final product?
Uh, these are colors pretty close to what we think is final. All right, we listed the colors somewhere.
Was there a-
There is an ARB application- There is an ARB application, but I use it for each.
Yes, if I recall correctly, I think for each home, a separate ARB application was submitted. And that should identify all the colors and the materials proposed.
It was.
Correct.
From August 11th.
And we would assume that if, if a elevation is shown with particular colors or that, that, that those are going to be the colors. The applicant wants to change those, need to resubmit.
Correct. The colors, stakeout. What else, what else, what else am I missing, guys and girls?
And we see a rendering of the back of the house. Besides just the sketch, it's like a picture.
Your renderings. Okay.
We'll have to do those.
Your house rendering, anything else? Tommy, Sandy, Rick?
I have a couple of comments whenever you want me to weigh in.
I just wanted to point out before you start, Rick, that for each one, an elevation, it's not a, it's not like a simulation or a rendering, but there's an actual elevation of the rear, rear wall for each of the houses provided on the elevations page. So you can see how, how, how high it'll look in that manner.
Did you want something different than that, Robert?
Yes, I would like something different. I really need to see it visually, of an actual picture or rendering of what the back is going to look like other than just a sketch version with, you know, dimensions and so forth.
That's similar to the pictures that we have of the front of the houses.
Right, yeah, similar to the front.
So you really want a, a rendering and not just an elevation? Not, not just a flat elevation view?
Now, I think one of the memos, there was some question about the different varieties of roof lines on the, uh, these houses. Do we have that information, you know, as far as which roofs are more peak than the others?
Well, but if you, if you flip from page to page on the elevations, you can see, you can see the roof lines clearly. That's one thing that is, I think, easier to understand from an elevation drawing than from a, from a perspective or a rendering. Because you can really compare them one, one, one to another. If you look at the rear elevations and the side elevations, you can see exactly what, you know, how the roof lines, the relationships. In the drawing set, I have typically the elevations were called A1 in each case. A dash one in each case for the five lots.
All right, so, but can we still see a picture like the front? I think it really, it does make a difference when you see it.
Yeah, if you want it, you can have it for it, yes.
That's fine. I think Eric's got it right. Okay, you want to go ahead, Rick, with your?
Sure. I, I want to underscore what Natalie had brought up, and it's also in my memo to you. There were a number of conditions in the original subdivision that I have not been able to find any proof that they were complied with. And so the applicant needs to provide proof that these conditions were accomplished. They dealt with various easements and deed restrictions of various and important aspects of this project. And if the applicant has any uncertainty as to which ones they are, they can contact Natalie, or they can contact me, and, and we can identify them very specifically. But it's very important, and this board is not going to be approving anything until those things are confirmed that they have been accomplished. If they have not yet been accomplished, it means that it will take some time to accomplish. So that's why I'm suggesting that attention be paid to it now rather than waiting until the last minute. The other thing I wanted to do is, just for the board, because you don't deal with ridge preservation that much. And a lot of times in the past, it seems like ARB and ridge preservation seem to sort of get fused into just the same look at it, and it's, they're very different. And so I just want to spend just a minute or two just underscoring for the board the different analysis you have to have between ARB and ridge preservation. Now, ARB is your typical thing of, as Natalie and also Jonathan were talking about, looking at the houses, looking at their design and color, size, similarity, dissimilarity. That's your typical ARB, the materials that are involved, et cetera. Ridge preservation is very different. Although some of the same elements such as color and visibility are certainly there, but it's a very different analysis that you have. And I went through some of that in my memo to you, but just to highlight, in ridge preservation, you're really looking at that what is the impact of these designated view corridors? And I'm not sure that the planning board members know exactly where these view corridors are. Both H2M and NPV traditionally have guided when there've been big projects and dealing with ridge preservation, have identified for the board where those view corridors are, so that you can actually go there, stand in that view corridor and look down at the project, especially after it's staked, and try to figure out whether or not there's going to be any problems with ridge preservation. Because that's what you're really looking at. It's not just a street view, it's just a view from the scenic corridors. That's what you're protecting under ridge preservation for these homes above elevation 600. I mean, there are easy things like not reflective windows. The structures have to be constructed of natural materials, wood, brick, or stone, be of a natural color. But the roof cannot be visible from any of those view corridors, or it must blend into the hillside. And I think unless you actually know where these view corridors are and then take a look yourself, you're not going to know from plans submitted whether or not it's going to be visible, or whether it's going to be blending into the hillside. Because it may be, even though there's vegetation now, where they're clearing may just allow this home to stick out like a sore thumb in this view corridor. And so then you have to decide, should we put it on a different section of this parcel? Or do we have to supplement what's there with respect to evergreen or deciduous trees? All of this is required as part of the ridge preservation. So I think if you look at my memo, that will help a lot. I've tried to make it easy picking out the relevant parts of the code. But I think it's, it's a decidedly different analysis for the board members as to the ridge preservation review versus an ARB.
And that's something where a balloon, almost a balloon test would almost be handy if we wanted to see how the house would look from various ridge corridors.
If, if, if that was warranted, it's not necessarily warranted, and also the applicant has the ability to try to have a photo simulation to help you with that. There's, there's ways to do that where they can, with somebody with credentials, to be able to do that is to superimpose what is being done from a point on their view corridor, the scenic corridor, and give you a view as to what would happen. And it also may be very clear, and a lot of times we've had the ridge preservation review where the board members have said, well, it's so clear you'll never see this house, just because of the way that it's situated on the hillside. And then you don't need a lot more than that. But, but you don't really know that until those homes are identified and you take a look from the view corridors. And I know that both H2M and NPV, I don't have it, otherwise I'd provide it, but they have, you know, where these view corridors specifically are can provide that information to the board so that you can look at that in addition to your site visit.
Well, also there, as you, when you started, you were talking about what was, what were the conditions of approval for the subdivision itself? A lot of those issues, the framework for how ridge preservation would be handled in the future as each house went in, you know, were, are often handled at the subdivision stage. And I'm not familiar with this subdivision approval. And as to whether there are any specific ridge preservation related conditions.
Yeah, and I think, Rick, that's a really great point. And it's actually, just for the board's information, on the zoning map, the ridge corridors are shown in like a green hatching. I can share my screen if you're interested in looking at it now. Or in future submissions, we can kind of highlight that in our memo. It's up to you.
We can take 30 seconds to look at it right now?
Yeah, that'd be helpful. I forgot that was on the zoning map. Thank you Natalie.
Yeah, no problem. So can you guys see what I'm looking at here with the zoning map?
Yes.
This is a proposed subdivision property, I believe. That's correct, yes. And I'll show it to you also on Google Earth. This is Oak Concourse, just adjacent to WP3. So this is this area, and then this green here is Route 17, and that is a ridge corridor, ridge preservation corridor. Similarly, 32 is one, and then up here also 105. And you can see on the legend, not to move around too, too quickly, but that's identified in the green. So basically, for this application, that's where you would be considering the viewpoint. And we would have to basically assess what the most visible location along this area would be. And we will do that for our future memos.
Wait, Natalie, you said that's 17, or is that 32?
I think this is 17. Oh, it turns into 32, that's correct, sorry Sandy.
Okay, no, because I was trying to orient myself to the map, okay. And then the one beside it is the thruway?
The thruway.
Yes.
Okay, that's right. So yeah, you know, we'll look at the topography and see, it will be basically what's cleared in this area, and then also at the highest elevation along this ridge corridor that you would have the most impact on this area.
If you'd be able to address that in a future memo.
Absolutely. That's a really good point. Thank you for calling it to our attention.
Thank you for that, Rick. Anything else, Rick and Natalie?
No, I have nothing further.
Me neither.
And I'm all set.
Thank you Jonathan.
Can I ask a quick question?
Go ahead.
Uh, previously was brought up, and one of, one of the speakers noted that the size of a home is considered when you talk about a big garage or a big basement, or maybe even, I may add, a big attic. In my construction experience, and, and all the towns that I've been working in, unfinished space is considered unfinished space. That's not considered living space, and that doesn't really count for the size of a home. Somebody has a big unfinished basement, let's say they built a ranch of 1,800 square feet. There is a big, big basement of 1,800 square feet. Nobody would call that a big basement. Or, I mean, they call it a big basement, but they wouldn't call it a big home because it has, because that ranch has a big basement that's unfinished. So I'm a little confused with that comment.
I think that, well, Rick, that falls under the whole cubicle content?
Yes, so the si, the size of the home, including cubicle contents, it's the visual impact under ARB that you're looking at. So whether or not something can be seen but is unfinished is irrelevant, as Jonathan was saying.
Yeah, I mean, if you had a 6,000 square foot house, and you didn't, and you didn't finish it on the inside, it would, it would look a certain way from the street. And after you finished it on the inside, it wouldn't look any bigger. If you leave it unfinished, it'll look a certain size. And if you finish it on the inside, it'll look the same size. So how the appearance of how a house looks in compared to its setting really has nothing to do with the finishings inside, it's really the volume.
So if you have a, a 6,000 square foot ranch that has a 6,000 square foot basement, would you look at that as a 12,000 square foot home?
I guess it would depend on, on how much of the basement was above grade. And if it was next to a 12,000 square foot house that was half finished, I wouldn't say they were the same size. You know, you wouldn't look at a 6,000 square foot ranch next to a 12,000 square foot two-story house and say, this two-story house, I didn't finish the upstairs, so it's the same size as the ranch.
Okay, so above grade is the, is the issue?
Yeah, the volume, yeah. It's, and it's, and it's a comparison of that to its surroundings. The whole idea is for a house not to be inappropriately dissimilar. And when you're comparing it, how you finished off the inside really isn't that important in how big the house looks compared to surrounding houses.
And the design of the home comes into play as well. I mean, if the predominant type of residence was lower homes such as ranches and other things, and you now propose a two and a half to three-story home, that has to be analyzed by the board as to whether or not it's excessively dissimilar in the neighborhood and the surrounding areas. So it's, there's no really mathematical calculation that you say, well, this one passes and this one fails. The board has to take a look at the entirety in its context with the neighborhood and the, and the area surrounding the neighborhood in order to try to determine whether or not the ARB is proposed as appropriate.
So have these homes that we presented, are they off from the homes that are over there in the area?
I don't know if the board has made that determination yet.
No, you haven't provided that information, that's what we're asking for you to.
Well, I think there are renderings available, but there is also information available on Orange County GIS regarding footprint and livable area, which we tried to summarize in our memo. It's absolutely up to the applicant to verify that, and also if they have additional information, they can provide it. But it's a good opportunity for the board to consider just that living area and already how the proposed homes are larger by 20 and 49%, considering the smallest and the largest home in that same subdivision. And then if you add in that unfinished space again, it just increases the size and the difference among the other homes. So that's something, again, just for you to consider.
Yeah, and, and, you know, this isn't a, a, a new thing we're asking. Back in, in March, I had commented five of my previous memo was, you know, what are, how does the size of these houses relate to the surroundings? And. I heard some, some other voices. But I don't, I don't have any other further comments.
So can we have this continued as a, as, as open for the next meeting?
Yeah, it would be part of your next, it would be, it would be one of the, it's one of your takeaway items for your next seminar.
Right.
Okay, great.
Does any, so anybody else have any other questions for this applicant? Or does the applicant have any more questions for us? I think you got some homework tonight that you have to get together and then resubmit and we'll, and then also let us know when the staking is done, and then we'll go out there and we'll take a look, and that will, you know, kind of help. And then the board can also look around the neighborhood while they're there and take a look at the surrounding, you know, structures and neighborhood.
Does the applicant have any idea about approximately when he could get that done?
We can work as best as we can to, to, to get this done, let's say by the next hearing.
Okay, just like I said, just let the building department know, and then we'll get the word out. Right, everybody else okay? Everybody else good?
Yeah.
Eric, you're good, you understood?
Good.
Okay, good. All right, Rick, and I think you said you were done too, right?
Yes.
All right, with no further business, I'll make a motion to close.
One second.
Pick two. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Great, wow, get me out on the road.